Good evening. Welcome to the West Covina City Council Meeting. Today is June 20, 2023. It is 7 o'clock. My name is Rosario Diaz and I am your Centennial Mayor. Let's get started. Meeting is in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez from Amazing Love Ministries, and Mayor Pro Tem Tabatabai will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Fathers, we gather here this evening. Once again, we thank you for the freedoms of America. We thank you for our great country, Father. We thank you for the principles upon which this country was founded, our Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and, Father, we thank you that you are good and you've been good to America. Now, Heavenly Father, we remember the words of the great man of all in the Scriptures who said that "By the blessing of the Lord, the city is exalted." So, Father, I bless this city in Jesus' name. I bless, Father, every representative here, Father, every city council person, Father, our mayor, those that work for our city, Father, our city manager, Father, and the city attorney, and our police chief. Father, we pray for wisdom for them. We bless our businesses, Heavenly Father. We bless our schools, Father, that they will continue to stay safe havens, Father. And we bless, Heavenly Father, all those in our city that may have suffered loss this year, Father, and we don't even know about it, the hurting, the lonely, the wounded, Father. You are the comforter of the broken hearts. And, Father, we bless our neighborhoods and we declare them, Father, safe neighborhoods. And now, Father, the Lord bless you and keep you, West Covina. The Lord make His face shine upon you, lift up His content as upon you, and grant you His alone peace. And we declare the protection of your angels, Father, over our police officers, our soldiers, domestically and abroad. And we thank you for the guidance of your Spirit in conducting this meeting in honor, respect, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Contos.
Here.
Councilman Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tem Tabatabai.
Present.
Mayor Diaz.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado is absent.
Let's continue to pray for her recovery. Thank you. We had no closed session, so we have nothing to report. We have three presentations today. I would like to call David Kochan. The International Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse and the World Health Organization at the United Nations launched the first World Elder Abuse Awareness Day on June 15, 2006, in an effort to unite communities around the world in raising awareness about elder abuse. An estimated 5 million or 1 in 10 older Americans experience elder abuse, neglect, or exploitation. Working together, we can build an essential social support that prevent abuse and keep everyone safe as we age. This is near and dear for me. I don't want to get sentimental here, but I have an older mom. She's in her 80s, and I'm always trying to take care of her. Every day, I call her, or we spend some time together, and it's just really important that we take care of our elders, our parents, and even our neighbors. I have some neighbors that I'd like to check in on, and he's 104, and she's in her mid-80s. Yes, she is a very nice lady, and so is he, and I'm always praying for them and making sure that they're taken care of, along with my elder aunt and uncle who are also having some issues, and so we try to take care of them. Would you like to say anything?
Sure. Thank you so much, Mayor Diaz. My name is Dave Kochan, and I'm here representing the Aging and Disabilities Department of Los Angeles County, and we take elder abuse, obviously, very seriously. World Elder Abuse Awareness Day was established in 2006. It's an international phenomenon, and we are just very happy to be able to raise public awareness of world elder abuse and to be able to do what we can to prevent it and combat it and to stop it from happening. And we have social workers that go out all over the county to do home calls, conduct home calls, and, you know, put together case plans for our clients. And so, we are very honored to be here. We thank you for the opportunity and the honor of receiving this proclamation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, here's the proclamation, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, and it's now therefore I, Rosario Diaz, Mayor of City of West Covina, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim, June 15, 2023, World Elder Abuse Day in the City of West Covina. Okay, now, we have a very special recognition for Ms. Isabel Fulmer. Can she come down?
Hi. Congratulations. Okay.
So, congratulations to Isabel Fulmer, 7th grader at Edgewood School, for winning the title of 2023 Junior Teen San Gabriel Valley Regency West Coast International Pageant. Congratulations.
Thank you, Isabel. Yes. I want to thank the mayor and everyone here who has let me be recognized here tonight. I want to be... Okay, so, I'm so sorry. No. I'm blinking. So, I'm going to Internationals in July, and I'm very thankful to be going over there to be able to share my platform, Empire Kids. My platform is all about teaching kids all things finances to help kids be more prepared when they get older and they need to make important financial decisions. I'm very thankful to be able to be going to Internationals and be able to share this topic internationally, and just being able to do that is really important to me. Yeah, thank you.
So, where is this going to be held?
It's going to be held in Vegas.
Oh, in Vegas. Oh, exciting. Well, I have a little recognition here. Let's see. Here is a certificate of recognition from the West Covina City, and it says, "City of West Covina Certificate of Recognition, Isabel Fulmer, 2003 Junior Teen, San Gabriel Valley." Congratulations. Oh, do you want the parents? Come on up here. Come on. Would you like to say something?
Yes, we have been just very grateful to be part of West Covina Unified School District. They've been an amazing school district. They're actually a district of choice, which we're in a different district, but we felt like it was a very, you know, very important to do dual immersion, and we've been so very fortunate that we were able to have that opportunity of district of choice to come to West Covina Unified. We feel very safe, the administration. We also have Mr. Flowers, who was like, very much like a family member. He's always at school events and hi, and so he's like family, and so it's been a real blessing to be part of West Covina. Oh, Barbara. Barbara Fulmer.
Well, congratulations. You have a beautiful daughter.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we're just super proud of Isabel and her pageant career. You know, she's taking off, and we're going to Internationals in Las Vegas at the end of July, and she'll be representing Junior Teen California. She'll be competing against folks coming from Australia, Europe, and all of that. So, wish her good luck, and hopefully we bring back the crown.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, now we have our last presentation or certificate of recognition. I'd like to invite Nicole. Okay, "As the only vegan establishment of its kind in the area, One Veg World strives to further the health of the community through nutrition and flavorful menu influenced by global cuisines. One Veg World is proud to be of service for the past 19 years in our local community." Nicole Tai is here to accept on behalf of the founder, who is Tai Tu Hua. He has gone to heaven now, and we are here to honor him.
Thank you, Mayor Diaz and the City of West Covina for this great honor. We are forever grateful to our founder, Tai Tu Hua, for establishing this restaurant to save animals and save the planet. Over the past 19 years, we, with the support of our family and our friends, we've been able to weather through many things, including the pandemic, so we look forward to serving the community for many more years to come. Up here with me are some former and current staff to join in this recognition. We really couldn't have done it without them. So, thank you, Yvonne, Ellie, Alex, Ivy, Rosanna, Karina, and Veronica. And next, I would like to introduce Cesar Esabido. He's from Animal Alliance Network and the Plant-Based Treaty. He's going to share some words on our common mission.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to congratulate again One Veg World and thank the City of West Covina, the mayor and council. So amazing. One Veg World is really an amazing place. If you have not visited, please stop on by. It's just minutes from here, and they literally are spreading peace through amazing dishes. I would tell you my favorite, but it's too hard to choose a favorite dish, but it's amazing there, and just everything they do for the community, whether it be, you know, organizations or the students, helping out, donations, it's just amazing, and really, it's changing the planet and it's changing the world, you know, and I urge everybody to stop on by over there, and I appreciate One Veg World for recently endorsing the Plant-Based Treaty, which is amazing. It's a treaty, which is like the fossil fuel treaty, but incorporates animal ag, and it shows how you can really help to fight climate change and empower yourself with each and every meal that you have. So, we appreciate everything that One Veg World does for the community and the City of West Covina, and we can't wait to be back for the 20th anniversary, and I encourage everybody to check out the Plant-Based Treaty. And again, congratulations to One Veg World, one of my favorite places in the world, and you guys are amazing. Shout out to the whole staff and all the family. Thank you guys so much.
One last thing we just want to say. Be vegan, make peace.
Well, I have to, I have to say, I... Is it working? Yeah. I have been there, and it is delicious. I would encourage you all to go. My kids love it, and every time they visit, they take a little trip there. So, thank you. It's on Glendora Avenue? Yeah. Um, I don't know.
What's the parking structure?
Yes. Well, thank you. So, on behalf of the City of West Covina, I have a certificate of recognizance for One Veg World, celebrating 19 years. Congratulations.
Thank you. Just some vegan snacks for the city council members.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, can we take one more?
Okay, now we'll move on to oral communications. If you would like to address the council, please fill out your yellow form and submit it to Assistant City Clerk. How many do we have?
We have six speakers, Mayor.
Okay.
Our first speaker is John Shoemaker, followed by Armando Herman, followed by Darrell Spivey.
I look at all the things that can go wrong in a city, especially with the leadership, and I can't believe how a presentation about elder abuse can turn into "Look at me, how wonderful I am," by the mayor. Oh, I checked this person. I do this, I do that. Who cares? What does it matter? It was about what these folks do, how they handle things. It wasn't about you. You know, introducing yourself, "I'm the Centennial Mayor." Guess what? So will he be. He was a mayor during the 100th year. Doesn't matter. You just happen to be the mayor in this time. You know, and if you, if you really believed what you said, you'd have your husband shut the hell up the way he treats people and the names he calls people, especially women. Especially women. You know, what he calls people. Talk about elder abuse. My wife dies, and he attacks her. And you have the audacity to stand up here and smile like you're above it all, such piety. You know, when, when the minister was here giving a prayer, can we have a Catholic priest next time? Maybe he can do an exorcist and get Lucifer out of here, because from what, from what I hear, there might be an exorcist coming up. I think it's called a recall election. I cannot believe how our city can spend $7.2 million on overtime, which is the equivalent of hiring 40 new people, 40, in police and fire. So, we're paying, I think we have, what, 60, you know, 60 firefighters and 100 police officers? We'd go to 200 for the same expenditure. 200. I know in art history, they don't teach basic finance. You know, I know in art, they tell you if, you know, you dream it, it's true. Well, not in the real world. Not in the real world. And probably the last thing is, you know, I was all for the idea of having fireworks at big league dreams. Then I discovered, wow, it's in an extremely high fire hazard zone. You know, and then you hear things like, well, you know, the chances are, so we shouldn't, you know, we don't have to worry about it. Well, the chances are, there isn't going to be a nuclear war in the next 10 years, but we kind of worry about it and make sure that it, you know, work in trying to make it not happen. You know, I own a home in that high fire hazard area. You know? But I guess because at least two of you don't, you don't care, because as the mayor said one time, oh, people, people don't worry about things until it actually directly affects them, so I guess it doesn't directly affect her, so she doesn't worry about it. I also thought it was kind of interesting at the last meeting how we actually had the spokesperson. I guess Tony's really upset at you, Madam Mayor, because the spokesperson and enforcer for the city council got up here and blasted the Memorial Day celebration. It's not about giving out plaques and certificates, it's about people who died. Amazing how he didn't say that for so many years. I thought it was kind of odd that he would protect Lucifer, but actually attack you. I mean, it was kind of shocking from that standpoint. You know, so I hope you guys come to your senses, or at least the fire department comes to their sense and say, you know, we shouldn't be having major explosions in an area that can catch fire and burn all the way to, you know, San Dimas. So, we'll talk to you later.
Armando Herman, followed by Darrell Spivey, followed by Kathy Navarro.
Hope I could top that, but spending $7 million on 40 people that you can't provide is like, by the way, where's David? Oh, I'm wrong. He got fired, but the proper term, he got demoted. And the reason why, and I'll give you a scenario. You know, just currently in the news, this gentleman here, this African American from Los Angeles, goes by the name of Curvin "The Millie" Price Jr. You know, I, he goes back to the days when I was in Los Angeles, and I swore that he said he only had one wife, but the reality is, we found out that he was screwing two women. Now, whether he was taking advantage of them with the screwdriver or doing something just obnoxious, but Ms. Richardson, who was involved in development and scandals, guess what? Scandals, scandalous. This man and his so-called bigamy of life was allowed to rip off the public, and the developers behind it got to rip off the public. Now, going back to that $7 million while you can't hire staff, Paulina, I find that questionable, but give yourself another raise. Matter of fact, let's give you a hand if you get a raise in the next 60, 60 months. But again, everything's all about a decoration. As a matter of fact, Mario Sobolvaro Lewis is here, and he knows exactly where I'm going with this one, because we got through talking about the proclamation of elderly abuse, and one of his case loads in the court said that he was involved in some rage against elderly abuse. Right, Mario? Well, he doesn't want to answer that, but, you know, on page two, this gentleman only had to sell five, five guns, six handguns, and then you go to page, yeah, he's right here, Mommy.
Behind me.
And then he had to show proof of a completion of a community labor and sex offender. Wow, this is just, the story goes on. Then he had to go to rehabilitation for all that and take anger management courses, and then it talks about the defendant's HIV test results having been received from the sheriff's department. Man, this just goes on. Page nine talks about progress of report for sex offender treatment program at Citrus Counseling Center received and filed and approved. Well, I got to give Mario, Mr. Louis Sobolvaro, an applause, too, because he completed his anger management, his sex offense class, and whatever other means of trouble this gentleman seems to get himself involved in, it's all right here. It's all right here. And I thought more interesting was this book in my hand called, by Sandra Boynton, B-O-Y-N-T-O-N for the record. It says, "Moo, bah, la-la-la." Oh, a cow says moo, Mayor. A sheep says bah, 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 woo. Three singing pigs say la-la-la, 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 soon you go away. No, 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 you say that isn't right. The pigs say oink all day and night. Who's protecting who? Oink, oink, oink. Oh, the rhinoceros snort and, and snuff, and little dogs go woof, woof, woof. Yeah, some other dogs go bow-wow-wow, bow-wow-wow. And cats and kittens say meow, meow. Oh, you're such a quack, says the duck. Quack, 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 Tony Woo. You're quacking up on me. Ah! But a horse says neigh, because only Contantos can't see him. He runs off. But it's quiet now. What do you got to say? Well, all I can say is that this document here is proof of facts that I need to turn in to the record to Pauline, and I advise Pauline to post a record of how many new employees she's hired for that $7 million that she's got at the West Covina residence. And by the way, please, don't be a sex offender.
Darrell Spivey, followed by Kathy Navarro, followed by Matthew Smith.
Well, first of all, I don't even know what to say. It's hard to follow the great awards tonight from the first three groups tonight, and I hate to bring this up today, because I am grateful for law enforcement, and I'm grateful for code enforcement in City of West Covina, and I'm grateful for building in safety. But I have one issue, I'm back again for the same issue, and I did get a great response on the last time, and especially Officer Nelson, he's above and beyond. Matt Nelson, amazing, totally amazing. But this is regarding parking, and I have my original parking ticket from February 9 of this year, and I have the code 22-185, parking of trailers when they're attached. That makes having a trailer legal to park if they're attached, if you move it within 72 hours. So, that I do. So, I fought this ticket given by A. Lopez, and I investigated who, I tried to investigate who A. Lopez was, and nobody seems to know A. Lopez. So, I don't know if he's part of the City of Tustin, because the people that took my $65 plus $4 service charge is City of West Covina at PO Box 2081, Tustin, California, 92781. So, I don't know who, if this is a scam, if these are a scam, not given out by a real officer, or if Tustin is coming up and working for West Covina. I don't understand, but the threat of having the DMV block my registration on my trailer, I paid the bail amount of $65 in order to fight the ticket. So, I did fight the ticket with photographs and proper explanation, and they came, it came back denied, and it said if you want... came back denied, and it said, if you want to appeal, go through this process. I went through that process, months later, what, four months later, it was denied, and I get this letter, I got this letter, I took a picture of, and I also sent it to Matthew Ariza. Also, let me tell you, Matthew and Mylin and Patrick at Code Enforcement, they're wonderful. But he didn't get back to me on the $65. How do I get my $65 back? I do not know. But then it says on this letter that I can appeal again if I pay more money. So I don't know how much money I have to pay out, but it did not give me instructions on where and how, anywhere on this letter, anywhere, how do I fight this? But it just says, we want more money from you to be able to fight for a third time. So I'm just kind of, I don't want to give up, because I need that $65. We're having a lot of trouble making ends meet with our house payments and our bills and giving up food right now. And it's really hard times for us. We went through quite a bit. I almost lost my thumb, lost my transmission at my car, and I, you know, and then I'm paying out $65, but this is not the only one. There's multiple avenues of attack of money where we can't afford this. So if I'm parked legally, why should I lose $65 plus the additional service fees and additional fees and, and take off of work and, and stop doing whatever I'm doing to go and fight? And I don't know what to do. I want the money back, please. How do I get the money back?
Do you have your information, phone number and all that? Okay, well, if somebody can contact you.
Yes, and, you know, once again, I'm grateful for the City of West Covina. I am, I truly am, and I love living here, so I hope we can resolve this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Kathy Navarro, followed by Matthew Smith, followed by R. Robinson.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. Council, Mayor Rosario, I have to say, you are a beautiful lady, and the council is doing a fabulous job. This is Hector Ojhario, he's also from Project 2911. I'm here tonight to give you a little gift and tell you thank you very much for coming to our open house. I hope it was interesting to you, I hope it was rewarding to you. And to anyone here who needs help with food, certainly, we'd love to have you come, we serve every Friday, we have big boxes of food enough to feed a family of four for a week. It includes everything you might need for your family. What I'm here tonight is to talk a little bit about our funding. We are in desperate need, and West Covina has been the most generous to us through this CDBG grant, and I understand that they have cut back. Our numbers show that as of COVID, the numbers went up to 37,000 people we served in a year. Then they went up, then they went down in '21, then they went back up again in '22 to 39,800 or 500. The numbers are there in front of you. And then this year, we're already in the month of March at 4,000, which means if that continues, we'll be serving 44,000 people this year. So, because the cut has really, will really affect us, and the numbers are going up, we are in need to purchase more food, higher gas, also, we, we need a cargo van, which Hector will tell you about. And I'm just here to ask you if there's a program that you might know of, if there's a contact that we could go to for financial assistance, or if there's any possibility you could work with us in any way, we would really desperately appreciate it. And before I turn it over to Hector, last week Maureen Hines was here, and she told this gentleman who has probably not too much of a regard for respect of other people and what they do, and what we do here, and what the city council does. If you could only put your energy into something constructive, it would benefit you and this whole community. Because when you come, you disturb this whole council meeting, so that people who are here to present something really nice and, and great to our community, you ruin it and they get up and walk out because you have some nasty words to say. And you ought to apologize, and you ought to stop coming.
Move, 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 mommy.
Okay.
Must be talking to you, mommy, not me. Move, move, move.
Stop being disruptive. That's your, that's your warning.
All right, council members, thank you so much for showing up again. I reaffirm what Kathy has said. Thank you each one for coming and supporting, it was a pleasure. I missed out on Brian, he came very early, but I saw him just kind of come and go, I'm pretty sure it's a packed schedule. But, you know, we are, the numbers are growing, we, for the way we have a budget, it's only to, we're right there at the limit, and, but the need is still growing. So the need is growing, and the numbers are growing, and we're already kind of at our limit, so we're kind of reaching out, looking for new avenues. Anything you know of would help us severely as well. The cargo van, it's kind of something that we have been looking for to, to help us with the routes that we do, the grocery stores we pick up, the groceries we pick up from the grocery stores. And just to kind of a little nuance is that we don't have any staff, paid staff or, or anything, we don't pay any kind of payroll for anybody, everybody's volunteer, from, from the president down to the volunteers who pick up food, to the volunteers who resort everything and clean, it's all volunteer, nobody gets paid as well. Actually, we don't pay that much for food. It's, a lot of it is coming from the LA County Regional Center, and as well from local, local grocery stores. A lot of it is, is, you know, the rise of gas, rise of insurance, some of the materials we need for boxes, there's a lot of things that also go into it. So, and with that saying, if, as well, you could announce our services in your social media or any kind of website or anything like that, we would love that as well to help more people as well.
Thank you.
Matthew Smith, followed by...
I have a suggestion, okay? Since we, West Covina, I've been supporting you from CDBG fund, have you tried Covina, since you located Covina City? Have you tried to talk to the council member, have then to use the CDBG fund? This is first thing. Second thing, okay, and maybe you can do a fundraising, okay? So have some of the big business in the neighborhood, and they are willing to, okay, and open up, and then you will say they are the donor, okay, and for helping the people in need for food. So I think this is two suggestion, okay, for you to try to get more funding, stable funding for your operation. That's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Matthew Smith, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Glenn Kennedy.
Good evening, City Council. I'll be relatively brief tonight regarding senior softball. Summer's coming up, we're gonna actually start the games earlier, so we finish earlier before the heat comes around, and I want to personally thank you from a business standpoint, the summer concert series, there's six of them this year, and Bun Street and Tamale Street have been given the opportunity to participate, participate, selling food at the concert series. Last week it was Cold Duck, and Tamale Street sold, yes, Tamale Street, Brian visited us, so did the mayor, but we sold tamale's rice beans. We are expanding tomorrow night to include tamale rice beans, but also hamburgers with macaroni and cheese. So we'll have both places participating. But I want to bring to your attention, there's quite a few vendors out there, it's an opportunity for the businesses in West Covina to, to get publicity, to be in the community and, and serve, while there's so many community members at the concert. So it's just appreciated. Thank you for going, going through, and it's not easy work to put a line above six concerts and do the setup and the security and all those things necessary, but from a vendor standpoint and from myself, from a community standpoint, last Wednesday, it was very much appreciated. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
R. Robinson, followed by Glenn Kennedy.
Private corporations become bio munitions industrial partners under the Defense Production Act, Volume 50, United States Code Chapters 55 and Chapter 40 and Chapters 32 to 34 are the basis of my remarks tonight. There are treaties that prevent the usage of chemical and biological weapon platform technology to maim and kill unless the weapons are reclassified as public health measures and, and humans are reclassified as public health threats. Regarding Brooke Jackson's Texas federal case, I've mentioned that before, this case, USA versus Pfizer and Ventavia Research Group. Brooke's legal team has filed an appeal of the March 31st federal district court dismissal order before Judge Troncoli now appealed to the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals, and the case is currently jumping through procedural hoops. I'm speaking from a transcript from Catherine Watt, Proton Mail, at Baileywick News on the internet. The transcript is censored to remove terms such as describing the Pfizer products as weapons, describing the lethality of the DOD Health and Human Services Program and products as intentional, and urging, and urging others to use proper language, especially lit against lawyers and lawmakers. If you're in a federal court and you're using the wrong words, you're probably using the wrong law as well. So this game that's been going on for three years with language, it's, it's George Orwell's style, change definitions, people call it a vaccine rather than a bioweapon, and the federal court showed us that it's, the public health threat is an illusion, and it's really, it's been a bioweapon and a DOD operation from the very beginning. But who knows that? Hardly anybody. So that's why I'm here talking tonight. The official narrative has been lying from the beginning about what's going on. It's a chemical and biological warfare program, not a pharmaceutical project, but having said that, the order is pointing more attention to the Defense Production Act and how that relates to contract law, antitrust laws, and a few other laws. So these facts are interesting insights. I'm talking about the dismissal emerging from the dismissal order so far. Defendants revealed that in the dismissal that this is a military program, and folks who since then have done a lot of research in the matter using publicly available documents from the Department of Defense, Operation Warp Speed, BARDA, DARPA, that's the Biomedical Advanced Research and Defense Advanced Research Development Authority, contracts that become available to all the COVID countermeasures, not just vaccines. The suit under the False Claims Act was in fact a valid defense, and dismissal wasn't surprising since these perverted legal structures were upheld by this federal court, and so the result was as expected. The truth will eventually emerge, and justice will, will probably prevail. So, you know, I mentioned the treaties that prevent the usage of chemical and biological weapons on a battlefield related to the COVID-19 Killbox. That's a military term, because we're talking about a military program. The primary mistake was thinking that the rule of law still applied and thinking that federal drug regulations...
On a positive note, how's everybody doing tonight? Tonight I'm representing the Historical Society, and to let everybody know that on August 19th, Saturday, August 19th, we are having our, our summer fest, and it will be the centennial one. And, you know, it's only 45 bucks, so prime rib, it's a, it's a good thing, we recognize Citizen of the Year, and it's a great program. So with that, oh, one more thing, anybody else interested in history? Charles Moss and I are doing the History of West Covina, it's called Barn Talk, and it's on Facebook, and you can also get it on YouTube, Glenn Kennedy. Thank you very much, nice seeing everybody, you have a great day.
Thank you.
David Schwartz.
I missed you guys last time. Mine's gonna be very short, and this has to do with the Fourth of July. And I think it's about time that the City of West Covina lets us have fireworks stands again in West Covina. We've had them in the 60s and 70s, and I think it wasn't until the early 80s that they stopped doing it. I think today with standards of building, we have less chance of fires, but we're, we're losing a lot of, a lot of money from civil service organizations, veterans, associations, nonprofit civic associations, you know, things like Boys Scouts and Girl Scouts. When I worked for the City of Huntington Park, we had a fireworks stand, we had it right on the edge of our city on Alameda Street. We made tens of thousands of dollars. We made almost a quarter million dollars in about five days. And we were right on the, on the edge of Huntington Park, so everybody from Los Angeles were coming into our fire, to our thing to pick, to buy fireworks. Every year, around Fourth of July, the days before Fourth of July, there's firecrackers and things going off day and night. In fact, they're already starting right now, since graduations. I think we can afford to take the chance to bring back fireworks stands so that the civic organizations can raise money, and I think it would be a big benefit to the City of West Covina. Going back to when I was at Huntington Park, I had a call, because I was a head of it that year, I had to call the fireworks company to keep on bringing in the stuff, because we were running out. And literally, on the Fourth of July, we had so much, so many people, that I literally went in, thank God I was a police officer and I was in uniform with my police car, that I went in and basically said to the highest bidder, and a fireworks thing that cost $50, they were, we were selling it for $100 to the highest bidder, literally, because I couldn't get more fireworks in. So we could, I think it's something that we should look at. I think we have a great fire department that can handle things that are going on, and like what one of our first speakers said, up at the, at Gallister Park, up in that area where the sports center is, that's a little risky, because there is a lot of dry brush up there. But I think it's time that we should, we should look at that again, and have fireworks in West Covina again. Happy Fourth of July.
Thank you.
No further speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just a few responses to some of the comments that were made this evening to Daryl Spivey. He is going through the process for fighting his citation, and so code enforcement will follow up with him and help clarify that process for him. And then in regards to Project 9/11, also have staff follow up with them and see ways that we can help promote their services that they offer. And as a council member will mention, we do provide funding for them, so we'll make sure that our residents are aware of the services that they provide that are available. sure that our residents are aware of the services that they provide that are available to them. And in regards to the July 4th event, I will be covering that in the City Managers' Report. So I think that covers my responses.
Okay.
Thank you. Now for the City Report.
So wanted to thank Roxanne and the Community Services Team. We had the open house last Tuesday for the Palm View Community Center. It was quite a very special event. It's very special, one of the few cities, I believe, that has an adaptive facility for our residents and community members of special needs, so we're very, very excited to have that facility open, and we encourage everyone to go to our website or in the Discover and see what classes are available and take advantage of those programs available at the Palm View Community Center. We also kicked off our summer concert series last week with Cold Duck, and we're very excited to get that started this year. We have our second concert tomorrow here as well, and it's a Bruno Mars tribute band, so we're very excited. We have a great lineup, so we encourage everyone to attend all of our summer concerts and help support the vendors, or attend at least one and enjoy an evening with us here at the Civic Center. Our senior center also had a Father's Day barbecue lunch and dance. It was very well attended, and I think everyone had a wonderful time. Upcoming, we have Athens, the bulky item pickup. So depending on your regular trash day, there's a Saturday that's been assigned for your bulky trash pickups. There's acceptable trash and items that they will not pick. There will be a flyer that's going to be distributed to residents so that they know what day or what Saturday is assigned to their pickup. Also, parking enforcement. So if you want to report parking violations such as abandoned vehicles, parking in unpaid areas, or permit parking violations, we encourage everyone to use our West Covina Report and Issue app that helps us track that, and as well as provides those that submit the request updates us to the status. To report immediate or urgent parking violations, if there being a blocking either your driveway or street, or overnight parking permits, or handicap parking violations after 5:00, if you can please report those to the police department, and the number is there at 626-939-8500. Also tonight on the consent calendar is the Landscape Maintenance Districts and the Citywide Sewer Districts. Just to give a brief overview, the only district that's getting an increase is the Lighting and Maintenance Citywide District, and it's the allowable increase of, it's no more than 2% CPI, and so that 58.85 rate is reflective of that 2% increase. As you can see, City Sewer LMD 1, 2, 4, 6, and 7 also have capital improvement budgets this coming fiscal year. We are looking to address some needed maintenance cleanup, some hillside cleanup, and so that's why we've allocated those capital improvement budgets this year. Couple other things, we've completed the City Sidewalk and Carbon Gutter Repair Project, so you can, we've been going around the city and fixing much-needed repairs to driveways and sidewalks in our community. These are just a few of the projects that were completed as part of that CIP project, and so we're very excited that we're able to get those improvements completed for our Another project that's also on the consent calendar tonight is lighting for Cortez Park. It's going to be lighting for the football field, and just wanted to highlight that. Next, as we approach Fourth of July, just wanted to make sure our residents are aware fireworks are prohibited in West Covina. Fines range from $350 to $3,000, so we want to make sure you guys are aware. We are going to, as every year, PD and Fire are going to be working collaboratively to enforce, make sure our community is safe. We also launched our carry concealed weapons CCW license information earlier this year. We are accepting, or the police department is accepting applications, so if you go to their website, they will, the application's on there and the process as well. They have issued some permits since the program was implemented, and so if anyone's interested, we encourage them to submit through the process. This summer, we have, we're canceling two council meetings. In observance of July 4th, we will not have a council meeting, so hopefully you'll be with us at the Sportsplex celebrating the July 4th. And in observance of National Night Out, we'll be canceling the August 1st, so we'll hopefully still be with our community members, just not in the council chamber. And just a couple upcoming events is the Street Suing B program. It's our last one. It's here Monday, June 24th, 6:30 to 7:30, and it's going to be a virtual and in-person meeting, so everyone's invited to attend. We do have the Centennial Fourth of July event at the Sportsplex. And I did want to address, I know we had some concerns last council meeting and this council meeting in regards to the safety. Since we last held the fireworks show in 2018 at the Sportsplex, the city has received a lot of community feedback wanting to bring back a fireworks show to our community, so we're very excited that we're able to bring it back this year. So this time we are proceeding with a fireworks show at the Sportsplex. Any event including fireworks in the city has to obtain approval by the Fire Department, who evaluates the risks associated with holding the event. In regards to fireworks, while we are proceeding with the fireworks show at this time, the Fire Department will make the ultimate decision the day of, should weather conditions, attendance, or other issues arise that would make it unacceptable to hold the fireworks show. Our resident safety is the utmost priority, and we will continue to evaluate the risks associated with hosting the fireworks show, but we are hopeful that there'll be no issues and we'll be able to celebrate with our community members. Part of the, to get there, if you are interested in attending, which we hope you are, there will be free shuttle services between 1 and, starting at 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and they'll be rotating every 20 to 30 minutes. There'll be pickup locations at Shadow Oak Park, Cortez Park, City Hall, and at the parking lot on the corner, southeast corner of Azusa and Amar. And so these are great alternative methods to get to the event, and we hope to see everyone there. I think that concludes my presentation.
Councilman Wu.
Yeah, on your schedule for shuttle service, you say 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM, but the fireworks show is 9:00 PM, so that is only for pickup, right? So pickup to, okay, and the transfer them into the Sportsplex, but 9:00 show will be over by 9:15. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Roxanne.
To the chair, if I may. Just to clarify, Councilman Wu, what it is, is 1:00 would be the first time that the shuttle would pick up individuals going over to the Sportsplex, and then the last shuttle pickup to head to the Sportsplex before the fireworks show is actually 8:00. For safety reasons, we do have to cut off at that time. We're anticipating about 30 minutes trip from whichever location to make it up the hill and to get our participants there safely. We will continue to have shuttle services after the event, but that time is anyone coming into the event to enjoy the festivities. Thank you.
So basically, because my understanding from 2018, people orderly, okay, and went to the Sportsplex, the show, okay, it's magnificent, it's very successful, and the struggling is when the show is over, everybody leave at the same time, so we want to make sure, okay, everybody get delivered to transfer into their destination, and they can go Uber or pick up their car in the parking lot. So we want to make sure that we have, okay, shuttle service during that period of time to deliver, okay, transfer people off the hill. Go ahead.
If I may, just to your point and to give a little bit more background, one of the things that we are doing this year, or we have been doing, is we've been coordinating with both PD, Fire, code enforcement, and then working with the Community Services and the Maintenance Divisions, just to ensure that we do have an orderly exiting plan as well as an entrance. It has been quite some time, about five years since the last time we had a fireworks show, so we're definitely taking those lessons learned, taking a look at some of the footage that we had from the drones as well as photos, and really relying on our subject matters experts in order to come up with an orderly plan.
Yep, and the last I want to mention about 2018, and the struggling is in the parking lot. But when they off on the Azusa, we have a traffic police officer to kind of guide us left or right, and it was very smooth, okay? It's no traffic jam on Azusa at all. It's just like whispering and the smooze, and everybody go home safely, and next day we just receive nothing but compliment about City host, okay, held this event for our residents. So hopefully we have another very successful event, and I think that the parking is a major issue, is our concern, and of course, the safety, that's a priority, to make sure everybody have a good time and over there. And I think this time, since we have our vendor and we have a hero parade, I think it should be a magnificent event. And don't forget, we went to Pasadena a couple years ago with their fireworks, and they charged like, I don't know, $50, $100 per person and parking, and we do this for free. So thank you so much, staff, and I think we are going to have a wonderful time for our residents.
I'm looking forward to it. That was a great presentation, City Managers' Report, very good. Okay, let's move on to our consent calendar. City Council, anyone want to-
I want to put, okay, everything from Wilden, you in trouble now, okay? Number 2, number 4, and number 6, everything regarding the, okay, lighting and the maintenance district, and can I, Mayor, can I put everything together?
I think that's-
Yeah, since this is all unpackaged.
I think that's a bigger, and I'm going to pull number 3. Anyone else?
Can I get clarification, if I may? Item number 5 is also an assessment district. Did you want to-
Yeah, go ahead.
I wasn't sure if you wanted to include that.
2, 4, 5, 6.
And I'm pulling 3.
Yeah, we put almost everything.
I know, we might as well pull the whole book.
Exactly. Number 1, what's level?
I think that's your fault.
No, it's one thing, it's only one.
Okay. You got that?
Yes.
Okay.
But I need a motion to accept the-
I'll move.
Okay.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Tabatabai, and a second by Councilman Contos to approve the consent calendar, with the exception of Items 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 4-0, Mayor.
Councilman Wu?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. It's okay, I think the maintenance district is the issue we have about the city regarding all the hillside and the common areas, and my understanding, okay, and we need maybe Wilden Engineering to kind of share with us, okay, and yeah, you can, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I have a presentation.
Oh, you have a presentation. So really quick, okay, I just want to make sure, okay, two, couple issue, the first issue is, we want the people to understand which the district they live in. Okay, people pay extra money, like HOA, okay, like they pay yearly $700 some dollars or $500 some dollars, $300 some dollars, depend on which district they live in. So many people already pay, so we want to make sure, okay, based on the fee, that's sufficient enough to clear all the hillside, the fire hazard, manage the tree, the big tree behind their property, okay, belong to the 7 district. So we'll make sure that is what we approve, okay, with the fee, okay, or this fee is sufficient enough for us to make sure all this potential fire hazard will be cleared, okay? And the second thing is the performance, how we base on this 7 district and including the citywise, meaning out of this 7 district, that is City responsibility of the general fund. Am I right? Am I right, right? Besides the 7 district, people pay all the common area that's into our general fund. We paying, the city paying for all this maintenance.
Through the assessment district, yes.
Right, so the hillside is not belong to the, okay, district, then City will pick up to make sure those here is clear. So we want to, okay, make sure, because this is so problematic, all this people pay, and the response is the people don't get what they pay for it. So we want to make sure from today we're going to approve this based on your engineering research. And another thing regarding on the District 4 and District 2, okay, supposedly last time we talking about they have overlap, so we're going to redistrict, so make sure who paying what, so everybody responsible for their area, so nobody overpay, or they pay, they don't get service. This is second question. So, and, okay, based on that, where is number 3 and number 5? Okay, we missing number 3 and number 5. We don't have 1, 4, 2, 6, 7, so 1, 2, so we have no 3 and 5 district, so meaning we don't have that district? Okay, so maybe you can answer, okay, that question. So based on, really quick, okay, so I analyzed, D1 is Shadow Oak West, and the D4 is Shadow Oak East, okay, and including the Amar North, and the D2 is Azusa West, including all those hillside area, and the D6 is hillside, okay, of hillside drive, the east, and the D7 is hillside west. So people, if they live in this district, they should know what this they live in. So when people ask me about why we pay this, what is the service, so hopefully City can answer all this, so we can start in cleaning up all this, okay, hill and all this common area, and they pay for it. Okay, I done with my question.
Okay. So, a landscape maintenance district is a special district formed to provide benefiting property and is the opportunity pay for enhanced landscaping, improvements, maintenance, and services for those areas. Residential homes and businesses alike located within district financially contribute to one or more LMD zones by way of special assessment. So we do not have LMD 3 or 5. These are the districts that are before you tonight that are located within the city. Lighting and Maintenance Districts citywide and the city sewer wide, or citywide sewer districts. Then we have the individual districts LMD 1, 2, 4, 6, and 7. As I mentioned earlier, the only change in the assessment rate compared to last year will be for the citywide LMD with a 2% increase from last year's rate. This is an overview of their assessment income for the proposed 2324 fiscal year with the expenditures and the capital improvement budgets. As you can see, for the citywide sewer, there's an assessment of 4.3 with expenditures of 2.3, and a capital improvement budget that exceeds the assessment income. That is because we are using the fund balance to, what the money's for, to help do sewer projects throughout the city. So we are going to be using reserves for some capital improvement projects this year for the sewer. So that's why I wanted to clarify why that number was more than the income.
Yeah, I have a question. I have a question, okay, and regarding, okay, if the sewer, it should be paid by the taxpayer. I pay my property tax, they should have a sewer fee, okay, right? Sewer fee, we pay extra on the property tax. So why we have to use the general fund on the fund balance? And then I think-
This is a fund balance from that assessment district funds.
Okay, so it's not in our sewer funds? It's all in the sewer fund, okay, got it, thank you.
So tonight's actions that you guys will be taking is for LMD 1, you are setting the assessment rates this evening. For LMD 4, 6, and 7, you are ordering preparation and filing of the Engineers' Report, and we are setting the public hearing date for the July 18th council meeting, and at that time you will be setting the fees, the assessment fees for those districts, as well as for the citywide LMD and the sewer districts. So those will have public hearings on the July 18th meeting, and that evening you will be setting the assessment rates. So this current fiscal year, LMD 1 and 2, we were able to budget capital improvement budgets for each district. Through those funds, we were able to address emergency tree removals, necessary tree trimming, and hillside cleanup. The cleanup included high-risk trees, dead trees, fallen trees, high-risk fire trees, and it also trimmed areas proponent for encampments, and so trying to address security in those districts as well. It also included extensive hillside cleanup along Azusa Avenue between Amar and Azusa. This also extended to hillside cleanup in District 4 and also the clearing.
I have a question. Okay, this is projection or this is already- Okay, this is projection or this is already?
This is this fiscal year.
I don't understand, but this is, we haven't performed yet, right? So this is not performed.
This is what we've.
Budget.
Sorry, this is a budget for this current fiscal year, 2223, and it's what we've done so far.
Have we done anything on the, you just mentioned about cleaning up the hillside, cleaning up the tree and this and that? Have we performed based on your budget 2022, 2023?
Yes, so we have done some hillside cleanup along Azusa.
Do we have any record, any, okay, what have been performed? Which area, you talking about Amar, the hillside? I understand that hillside still problematic, hasn't been cleaned at all.
By no means are we done. There's still a lot of work that we need to complete, but there has been some work done this year.
Okay, can city provide what have been done?
Yes, we can.
So we can provide for the resident where their money spent?
Yes.
I think this is fair. We spend their money, we show them what is the performance.
Of course, it's part of the budget.
Okay, thank you.
So that was what was done this year. And next year, so fiscal 2324, as you saw, we've increased the CIPs for all of the districts with the exception of the citywide LMD. Staff also is, will be working towards seeking proposals for tree trimming programs for the districts, just like our citywide, we are on a five-year tree trimming cycle. We want to get our districts on a tree trimming cycle as well. We also created an info page for residents. I don't know if Roxanne, you can get it up. So, as you mentioned, Councilmember Wu, you want to know what areas in what district. And so we've, staff has created a map through GIS that allows you to see where the boundaries for each district lie. And so you can identify, you should already know what district you're in, but also what areas in, in your neighborhood are in which district, because you could be on one side of the street, on the other side is a different district. And unless you have seen the engineer's report, you're not going to know. So this is going to be a tool that we hope our residents will take advantage of, just to identify what areas pertain to which districts. And also, if you scroll down, it'll have the engineer's report, so it'll have what the CIP budgets are, what the budgets are for that district, the assessments, and as you can see the map as well. So that's all on our website as we speak.
So this already on our website?
Yeah, that's live.
So the resident can, if they live in this neighborhood, they can check into it to check about where they live, what district, and how much balance, and what have been performed?
Yes.
That's good, thank you.
One thing that we've started this year is we've started, or we obtained requests for proposals to increase landscape services. The current scope of services is three feet from the top of the hillside to three feet from the bottom of the hillside, and everything in between doesn't get addressed or maintained. So through the request for proposals, we increase the scope of services to include the entire hillside.
Entire hillside.
Yes. So it's the entire hillside, all shrubs under four feet, trees up to nine feet and below. So there will be some initial major cleanup, and so the hillsides may look bare. So we hope our residents, you know, give us a little bit of time to let the plants grow. But that is all dependent on council. We're taking that proposal to council on the July 18 meeting. So pending approval of that contract, that scope of service will be increased for the LMDs. And then as we continue throughout the year, we'll continue to assess the needs of each district as they provide different constraints and different opportunities to improve. So some of the work that has been done already and what we're looking to do with the proposed new scope of services for landscaping, is the picture on the left is what currently, what was there before. And the picture on the right is, you know, the new, what we're hoping will be the new scope of services for maintenance, where you eliminate those areas along the fence and for individuals to hide or for encampment areas. So hopefully, we'll increase security in the districts. That concludes my presentation. If you have any specific questions, myself or our consultant can provide, can answer.
I think that the hillside is the major problem we have, okay, due to the overgrowth. And then when I walk, they look like jungle, okay? And the people complaining, like 10, 20 years, we haven't touched. So, and if they, if they, okay, locating the district, so meaning they already pay for the extra fee and to basically let held or the parcel should be including in the service. So just want to make sure, okay, and the city staff can address the issue about the performance, okay, and who is doing the job? If we hire the contractor, okay, and we want to make sure they do the job. And at the same time, when you say lighting and maintenance, okay, I think currently the maintenance is a major issue to the city and how we can address, okay, to the vendor or contractor we hire. And plus, okay, how we make sure they understand, like you say, okay, cannot be just three feet from their home, because then the jungle grow in between, that is just like, like encampment and this and that, extremely problematic for the resident living in their neighborhood. So how can we, okay, address the issue, attack all this problem that been years, okay, become a major fire hazard in two, in all this district? So hopefully, and with our team, okay, we can make this thing happen. So, so now here, maybe the engineer can share with us, okay, and based on their finding, our fee, everything is feasible for our cleanup effort. I think people wonder is the performance, okay? Is, if they don't want to pay the fee, and it's no performance, okay? And if they see the city really using their money to perform, and based on the estimation you have, I think, including myself, I'm happily willing to pay. And if I see my hill in the back, it's clear without potential fire hazard. Go ahead.
Good evening. That's actually something we're working on completely for this year and the next year, is really going through the budgets and going through all the maintenance, what we're doing to make it, to make it so that everything you're paying for is exactly what you're supposed to pay for. Currently, right now, it's a little difficult because there are upside down, there's so much more that the, that the city needs to be paying for. So the rates might possibly be going up, but not anytime, not yet. It's something we'll be looking at potentially in the next couple of years. But during that time, we'll definitely have workshops to educate everybody, to let everyone know this is what's going on, this is what's happening, rates might be increasing, this is what, when it's going to happen. But not this year.
Not this year?
Not this year.
So many people still have the way to see that dead tree, huge dead trees there in their neighborhood?
If I could clarify, so she's referring to the rates are not going up this year?
I'm sorry, okay. I was thinking about performance.
Oh, sorry.
Depending on the direction council chooses to go with the landscaping vendor on July 18, hopefully, we will be able to increase those maintenance.
Okay, and we understand, okay, everything going up, okay, and labor going up, and the gas going up, and, and, okay, but we need to pay the fair share. But again, go back to, we need to perform, okay? Without performance, you waste people's fee, people don't think they get what the fair share, okay? We just need to, maybe we have to perform one time and tell them we need to do this, okay, and regularly, okay, to make sure, okay, they are safe in their neighborhood. So, so, but how about the four and two overlap? Are you going to make this thing happen?
That's something we're working on as well. Right now, we're just having a $9,000 transfer from that, from LMD one over to, I'm sorry, LMD two, two over to four. There's a transfer right now to kind of offset that cost. But we are looking at possibly removing them from one of the districts. It's just, it's a little time consuming, so it most likely be next year.
So basically, Wildan, your job, okay, engineering is just do the hearing, analyze the fee structure, how would be fair to take over, okay, for that area to pay for the maintenance?
Right, right, so we look at the actual rate itself, if it's enough, and the, and how it's, how it's calculated, that's what we look at. And that's something that's not changing every single year, it just changes when we go out to ballot.
Okay, and then, and you're talking about basically Shadow Oak West and East Side on the Shadow Dry, both side, they all have a common area, parcel, the walkway, and then all these LED lights, they including the maintenance lighting district?
Yeah, so part of the capital improvement project or budget is going to be including
So let's.
Hillside cleanup, hardscape replacement, PSL lighting upgrades, conversion to LED, the dogway stations that I know the residents have, you know, really want out there, tree removal and replacement. So all of that will be part of it.
So, so basically, all this parcel with the line, most of things not working, okay? And then you have overgrown tree, okay, bushes kind of cover, so we want to make sure that is including our, okay, this, that, okay, maintenance district. And that money should go through, keep their parcel nice and clean, and that people can walk, right? Okay, so, so based on your estimation, this should be enough?
So the way we do it is we based on the budget that you, that you have, based on the maintenance, that the contracts, whatever you have, kind of, unfortunately, everything is going up, the cost of everything is going up. So I don't think at this moment, there's enough. There is a lot of, there is reserves.
I, I don't think it's enough, okay? But I, I think the city need to perform first, okay, fix the capital improvement, and then tell the resident, look at, we making very nice, but we need to keep up like this. And then possible, everybody have pitching couple dollar more. And I think when people see they have a nice parcel and the tree, the tree behind their backyard, not covered, okay, their, their backyard, they cannot even have a light, then I think people are willing, okay, to pitch in, okay? I think this is a, the performance a major issue we have right now. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
I'm Councilman Kanto's.
So from what I understand from the report, CPI is more than 3.6, but then the amount that we can only increase is limited to 2%, right? So that would mean that there would be a shortfall. And the report also made, reports made mention of the need for a study that will take several months to determine the extent to which more, more funding will be needed. So is that the next step beyond the approval tonight?
So if I may answer, Councilman Kanto's. So we started that this year, and through that, we were able to do the request for proposals for the increase in services for the landscaping. I think that was one of the biggest concerns that we received, was those hillsides were not maintained. The tree trimming was as needed basis. So the first hurdle that we tackled was that we're going to be presenting that proposed new contract to you guys at the next council meeting. The next item, or next step that we're going to be taking is doing a request for proposals for tree trimming, so we can get those trees on a cycle and maintained. And as we do that, we will also be continuing to evaluate the needs of the districts, whether it's a PSL lighting, the hardscape, and what capital improvement projects we need, or what increase in annual maintenance we need to increase so that that becomes an annual routine service instead of we let it go for five, 10 years, and we come back and have to do a more costly fix. So we're going to be continuing to do that. And as we do that, then obviously, that may impact the assessments. And if we, that does impact the assessments, then we will have to come back and ask the residents for more. But part of the reason that we are doing the capital improvement projects is to use those reserves that are in those districts and show the community that we are, you know, making good faith effort in addressing the concerns.
Great. And in order to, to, to build further efforts, are there already efforts to include irrigation using reclamation water to lower costs and so forth? So let's say when there's, you know, let's say, when you clear away the plants, the dead brush, then you plant new plants on the hills, then they need to be watered somehow, right? So then how would that work with regard to making sure that we have the right irrigation so that way, once we plant new plants, they don't die because of lack of water? But at the same time, we need to make sure to have that factored in. So is that also part of this process as well? So that, once the plants are, new plants are put in, then we'd be able to have the infrastructure to make sure that they're watered properly so that way they stay green once past the initial time that they're first planted?
Yes, we would look at it comprehensively if we're going to be, you know, replacing plants, you know, if irrigation is needed, that all be taken into consideration.
Thank you.
So is that something that will be in the July 18 hearing?
The July 18?
Is it July 18?
Yeah, so there's a couple items that are being brought back July 18. Is the proposed vendor for the landscape maintenance districts for the landscaping services, and then the public hearings for these districts.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. One, one concern I always have is, is the, the maintenance usually doesn't consider like an extra rainy season, like, like we had this year with large amounts of overgrowth. So in, in the, in the fees, are we are still going to include like, like a buffer for, for extra work that may be needed? And if we're in a dry season where, where maybe we don't have to use that, then it can accumulate. So that way, any special projects that need to be done in areas, we can make sure that we can take care of them. And just so we don't end up in situations where we, we lack the funds and then we get huge overgrowth. Thank you.
Yeah, we can take that consideration, thank you. Councilman Wu?
Okay, I understand, your job basically is engineering, you analyze and you try to find out what is, okay, fair charge for each of district? And, but, okay, my concern on the city is, okay, so who is doing the maintenance? Who is doing, do the cleanup, okay? Who, who's supervise them, okay? It's the, I don't think it's the city staff, I think there's, because I see so many obsoles, unbelievable, okay, grass go up so high, and then, and it's nobody, nobody really to, okay, take care, and it's really a fire hazard to, to the neighbor, okay, to the residents. So, so, but that's on hillside, okay, it's a north of Amar, okay, adjacent to the, okay, BKK, and you see all this hill, okay, and you see the fence, okay, that's on inside the fence, they clear all the weed, but on our side, and the huge area, okay, and you can see the, their grass, okay, they're high, and that is problematic. But I don't know, oh, I think that belong to, I saw the map, that's belong to our district, okay, I think it's number four, District Four, okay? So they pay extra, okay? And so, but who is doing those cleanup? And you answered, okay, and who we hire? And do we have a contractor? And who is monitor, okay, their performance?
So it's a team effort between our engineering division and our maintenance division. So engineering is the one that comes up and works with Wildan in preparing the reports and analyzing what the capital improvement projects are and putting these reports together for the assessments. Then we work with our maintenance staff who goes out there, and they do maintenance work on these, in these districts as well as our vendor. So our vendors, I think it's Bright View who does the landscaping, if I'm not correct. And I think the tree trimming, I'm not sure who the vendor is, I think Roxanne can help me with that. Tree trimming would be West Coast Arborist.
Okay, so we have a seven district, take out two, so we have a five district. And we have five district with a different charge, okay? And different photography and different geography, they're different here, okay, and, okay, up and down. So that's how they charge, they pay differently. But the thing is, okay, who is in charge of five district? Each district, who is doing the maintenance, okay? So maybe city need to look into, based on the, okay, and the fee we charge, then we can tell the resident that we have, what we're going to do quarterly to clean up that place, okay, and how much it will be performed. So have some kind of that we pay, we want to see the performance and who we hire, okay? And, okay, and when they're going to come back and to clear again. Currently, I see none whatsoever, so maybe we can, okay, and in this time, we approve this, okay? And hopefully, Wildan can do good job, okay? And to make sure we can, and with management team, okay, with your help, and that we can really taking care of this issue once for all, so we can do a regular maintenance. Okay, I remember before we quarterly, okay, every three months, we over there clear up all the weed, this and that. And then we have some people to drive through to take a look about the issue we have, okay? So with that, with the system, then I think we can take care of this issue, just like put a system into it, put a, we got money, we, we just need to perform, who is the vendor, okay? And, and I think our city currently, the major issue is the maintenance issue, okay? We need to make our city presentable. Thank you so much.
Okay, you're going to make a motion?
So, so can we have a report regarding who we hired and then? So, so can, can we have a report regarding who we hired and then we going to do each district, okay, and maybe we can get this in the near future?
So the vendor that does landscaping begins Bright View, and then the vendor that does a tree, tree trimming as needed basis, so it's not on a cycle, is West Coast Arborist.
The Bright View with a 4% that can do five district and plus the median, I don't think so. I don't think they have the manpower.
So Bright View is the one in charge of these districts?
I don't think so.
But if I remember, they're only doing three feet from the top, three feet from the bottom.
I think this is, there's a merchant, merchant doing the three feet on the top and, yeah, okay, a Bright View, Bright View is only do the median and the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's right.
And then the merchant doing the three feet from the people's property and down below. But currently, okay, the performance need to be, okay.
Well, there'll be a staff report for your consideration July 18.
Yeah, so Roxanne, maybe you can share the light?
What we can do, to your point, Councilman Wu, what we can do in the future through the acting city managers, we can come, we can put together something that's more visually descriptive so that the community can understand is who's doing what. Because there is a little bit of this contractor is handling this portion of it, this contractor is handling that portion of it, and this contractor does this portion of it. And I think it gets a little bit convoluted. So we, we are working, we can work with the acting city manager to prepare that for you. And then just as the acting city manager had indicated, we are looking at the scope of services. So what we were being provided before, what we're providing for our residents before is drastically different than what we'll be providing them in the future. So that we can more responsibly spend the funds that we have collected from those residents in the various districts.
Correct. Okay, and I think we have a 17 square mile, it's a big city, okay, and then, okay, we, we have this five district, it's a very heavy vegetation, okay, with hill, okay, and so it's not an easy task. So I think, okay, we need to look into the map and see, maybe we have to send IP to each district, okay, and each district, it's just a heavy loaded job, okay, to keep all this PSL and common area. I walk over there, it's a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of vegetation and tree. And maintenance will be pretty, okay, tough and, and, okay, heavy duty. So, so we need to make sure we have a proper vendor, again, can do the, the job and they can do regularly. Yeah, go ahead.
And also to the chair, if I may, something that we have been discussing at the staffing level, you know, with the acting city manager is supplemental work, because there is quite a bit that needs to be taken care of in order to get caught up to speed. We recognize that a lot of those areas haven't been touched, partially based on the way that the contract has been written in the past, and partially because of funding opportunities. So I think at this time, you know, we're looking at a plan that we can really leverage what's there so that we can provide those better services. We, we will have to look at something to supplement.
Again, here, we not try to criticize, here, we try to solve the issue, okay, we know the problem, and how can we work together, okay, and try to find a way systematically so we don't kick the can down below, okay, continue along the side. So in the future, all the city council will face the same problem we are facing right now. So if we can kind of, okay, make a right system, hire right people and have our superintendent to drive around, walk around to see the problem, and to give us the feedback, how should we do? And to make sure all this potential fire hazard and obsolete area that can be taken care. Again, again, is since we're talking about district and we have all these five district and people pay extra, and how can we utilize and then, then to perform, okay? I, I think this is over here. And we want to work with CTC, how can we work together, okay, and provide you some suggestion. And of course, you running the show, and we here just see based on what we see, how can we give you a suggestion, work together, possible we need to send out more IP with different district, okay? And again, we talk about it's how can we use Warner contractor, because they want to look pretty clean, but they're smaller city, okay? So we maybe need to hire more than one contractor to take care of different districts. So we have a service area, 1, 2, 3, 4, so possible, each district, we have one, okay, and the contractor, this is my suggestion, not necessarily we're workable, but possible something we can think out of the box and we can make this issue resolve. And this is what we than one, they want to see their neighborhoods clean and they want to see the neighborhood is safe and they pay, they willing to pay, they, they already paid their fair share. If not enough, okay, I don't think they, they, they won't shine to pay couple dollar to make sure, okay, everything is look nice for them in their proud neighborhood. Thank you.
I think what, Councilman Kontos?
In terms of the format of the report, if, if, in, in look, as a staff comes up with, with, with ways to do it, I would suggest that on the left column would be the, the item of whatever it is that's being repaired or, or being fixed up or, or made to look better. Then the next column would be a picture of the before of what it looks like now and then after. And then, and in that way, they can just look and see the different improvements. And then, then that way, it's easy for people to track visually. If that's difficult to put format wise there, they can at least number the pictures. So then that way, people can then go and look at the corresponding number to look at before and after. So that way, they'll be able to see the progress that was made.
Thank you. What I'll say is that I think it's a major, major issue that, you know, we have people paying for this and they're not getting what they're paying for. So I want to make sure that, and this is what I think we should do, is make sure that it's maintained, cleaned up, and then get a company to maintain it. And, and then we can have it not get away from us like it had. And hopefully, the people that we hire can do that. Anyone else? Mayor Protim?
Yeah, so I, I think just to reiterate what the assistant manager, Lerma, mentioned, making sure we do have enough funds. So whenever that supplemental work is needed, we, we can just do it. And, and that way, the residents always feel like they've, they paid the proper amount. You know, it's always terrible to be overpromised and then underdelivered. So let's just make sure that everything is properly funded. So we can take care of what we know, there'll always be extra work.
Right.
We just want to be able to, be able to do it. And the residents appreciate that. Thank you.
Move the motion to approve?
Second.
May I ask for clarification? Are we going to approve 2, 4, 5, and 6?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve, a motion to approve item 2, 4, 5, 6, and a second by Mayor Protim Tabatabai. For those reading at home, just gonna read the titles of those staff report numbers. Item number 2, renewal of the citywide lighting and maintenance district and preliminary approval of the engineer's report. Item number 3, consider, excuse me, item number 4, consideration of renewal of landscape maintenance district, numbers 4, 6, and 7, ordering of a preliminary approval of the consolidated engineer's report. Item number 5, West Covina Citywide Sewer Service charging, charge, setting a public hearing date on the method of collection. And item number 6, consideration of fiscal year 2023, 2024 assessment rate for West Covina Landscape Maintenance Districts, number 1 and 2. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Items pass 4-0, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number 3. Are we gonna have a presentation?
I did not. If you could put up the image from the city manager's report, Roxanne, please. Yeah. So this item is a part of our capital improvement project list that, oh, city, yeah. The city manager's report for the lighting. And so it is part of the scheduled improvements that the city wanted to address. And so we, you know, have funding for it and wanted to move forward with it. This is very exciting. I'm not a baseball player or a football player, but I now know very, a lot about Musco lighting and we're, it's very exciting. It's the cream of the crop lighting, and that's what we're going to be bringing for our players at Cortez Park. And so the item before you guys tonight is approval to purchase, to place the, or to purchase the lighting equipment. It is a four month leeway, our ordering period. So if we get approval tonight, we're going to place the order and we're hoping to get it by the end of this, end of the year. We will be coming back for your approval for a contractor to install the lighting. And we're hoping that we will get, or the goal is to start construction of installing those lights, January 2024, with aims to not impact our teams that utilize the fields.
That's wonderful. I think that's a great idea. And they're going to be LED lights, very bright?
Yes.
And they're gonna last a long time. We're not gonna have to spend this money again?
Yes, they're under warranty. I don't know, Roxanne, if you can add to that?
What I could tell you is that you're making an investment. And while it is, it does come with a big price tag, you are paying for quality. And you're paying for a product that there are a lot of cities, as well as professional stadiums utilize. So you're investing back into the community with these lights. Just as acting city manager said, there is a lead time for it, you know, it's going to take about four months for us to get the, the product in. But we are excited looking forward to it. This is an example of scheduling through the capital improvement, through the CIP, through the capital improvement program. And we're, we're excited.
Great. Hold on. I have one more question. Is this the only park that we have plans to install these?
Right now, that is what is scheduled in the CIP. We can most definitely look at these opportunities elsewhere and get some pricing for it and schedule it through the CIP. But right now, this is, this is the project that has been in the queue that we're, that we're bringing before you tonight.
Councilman Wu?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, can I, okay, share with us, okay, can you share with us about the funding source? Okay, where this funding coming from? It's from general fund, from park fund, or from restricted fund? So, okay, go ahead.
The funding is coming from the, from ARPA. So it is the local fiscal recovery funds that have allowed us to fund the program or fund the project and bring it before you this evening.
So this from the COVID recovery, federal funding, 19 some million dollars?
Yes.
Okay. And we have a 16 parks, okay? So can we find the funding source to each of the park, including the sports plaques, that we have a six baseball field and indoor soccer field with LED? Because they will cost us so much money just for the power bill. And if we can change everything to LED, I think we can save a lot, a lot of our general fund budget. But we need to find a funding source for replace all this, okay, football and soccer and, okay, all those field with all the LED light.
As part of the energy efficient program that we partnered with Alliance, I believe we upgraded the Shadow Oak lights, field lights there. We could definitely look at other funding opportunities for different parks.
I'm sorry, you say Shadow Oak, the, the baseball field that's had been replaced to?
The energy, energy update program that we did with Alliance.
That's good. Okay, so we have, including the Cortez, so we have two park, will have LED illumination with energy saving. So you will cut down our general fund, pay the power bill. I know it's very expensive, especially you, you, sometimes overnight over there. So we, can we look into potential, we own the park with Edison, any keep, any of, okay, cash back or any program we can utilize with LED? Because they want us to save the energy, right? And then, or we can find another of solar panel to upgrade all our 16 park?
We can definitely take a look and see where we can make those conversions to LED and do upgrades. One of the issues, I know that you mentioned the Sportsplex, I believe those lights that are installed are still under warranty. And so that's why, maybe that's not the first place we invest any future funds right now.
They're not LED, right?
I don't believe so.
So they cost a lot, no, so they cost us, cost us a lot of money just for the power bill. Because now people are running at nighttime, it's, but anyway, this is my suggestions. Can we look into all our 16 park, okay, and everything changing to, myself, all my house, I change all the light into LED, okay? It really save a lot of energy, okay? And now if we turn, turn the light on, I say, oh, don't turn it off, it's okay. Okay, we say LED. I'm cheap. Okay, so, so, so what I'm saying is, I think city can do the same thing, okay, looking to, maybe we can upgrade all the LED. And some of the like French's park, the resident talking about, they need more light at the playground. And I think they need to be, okay, looking to us, see we can help out. Because during the, okay, winter time, they go dark so fast and the kids still playing. And it's really not safe, they're playing in the dark. So if we can put a light, okay, and over there, I think that is, I think people, resident would be really appreciate. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Wu, were you looking for a rebate?
Yes, I'm looking for rebate. So city can get the money.
That's right.
Buy more LED.
Okay. I thought I heard you right.
Yeah, Edison has that rebate program. But my office, I got a rebate program from the Edison. I don't know, they provide this for the, I think they provide for city too. So I, I think we just look into all the funding source. So we can kind of upgrade our, okay, all this light to LED. Move the motion, please?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Mayor Protim Tabatabai for item number 3, consideration of approval of purchase order through cooperative purchasing agreement to Musco Sports Lighting LLC to procure lightning equipment for, for Cortez Park. Project number 22016. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Council, Mayor Protim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 4-0, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any requests? Councilman Wu?
Just really quick, it's not a, Madam Maia, but just, I think we already approved this. I just want to make sure city implement, okay, we, we, last time, we, many, many times we talked about expansion of internship program. And just want to share with you, this morning, I was, okay, and I was taking the elevator, then I have a young kid came in, okay, I can tell he's an intern because he looks so young, okay, like my grandkid, okay. Okay, so, but anyway, and I asked him, I say, are you the intern? He said, yes. And so I say, oh, which department? He told me the department. I don't want to say it. So I don't want to get into trouble. I said, did you get paid by the city? He said, no. And so I, I, I thinking, I remember last time, we say, we should pay the intern, okay, 15, at least minimum wage, okay, and then for them to drive over here helping the city. And, okay, I think we need to pay them at least the minimum, minimum wage for them to pay for their gas, okay? It's, it's really, okay, not fair for them to come over here, work for free. And I think we should just, okay, give them a real job, okay, and then to have a basic stuff. So two thing, one, okay, request the city, okay, make sure our expansion internship program, and we already approved it last time. Second thing, okay, many times, okay, second thing, make sure we treat young, okay, intern, okay, with fairness, pay them at least minimum wage, and make sure they willing to work for city. I know our acting city manager was an intern. And, and 19 years ago, now he sitting on the big chair, okay? And, and, and see, that is how internship really open the door for youngster, okay? And we need to continue develop our future with our youngster come, willing to come to work for the city. But we don't show change them, okay? I think pay them $15 is, is a very fair, okay? And we want to encourage more of college kid come to work for the great city of West Covina. And one day, they can follow the footsteps of our acting city manager, okay, and that is their future. So, but, but thank you. Would you please look into it and make sure that we, we pay people? And I think we approved it last time. Okay, thank you.
Any other concerns?
Madam Mayor, just wanted to put out the, just asking if cameras in the parks and, and the cage around the cameras. I don't remember what, whether we, we've, we've put that, given attention to that. But if we have it, if we could, please?
Is that a Madam Maia? We can certainly follow up on that.
I was trying to be short this time.
You surprised us. We can confuse, too short. Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Kontos, a second by Councilman Wu, to look at putting cameras in the parks with cages around the camera. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is, is a Madam May I, so just let the staff look into it, the possibility about, okay, this policy?
Any other requests? Okay, with that said, this meeting is adjourned.
And I, I see everybody tomorrow?